I mean, the way they do the divisions and the stuff, man.
This is crazy how...
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the October 12th Board of Supervisors Meeting to order. As always, we start with an indication. Would y'all be coming up to pray with me, please? My heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings and opportunities we are given each and every day by you. We ask a special prayer for those in the path of the hurricane and the first responders and those in the electrical fields and utilities as they go to help bring back those communities, you keep them safe during those difficult times. You know the needs in our hearts. You ask that you be with those folks, your love and grace provided to them. We ask that you guide this board as it makes its decision today in the best interest of the citizens of Rankin County. We ask this thing in Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen. Public comments. Mr. Brandon Cobb, come on up, sir.
Good morning. I guess y'all see that my prayers have been answered and the temperatures have dropped dramatically. We're very happy about that. Not only in my hot nature, but the mosquitoes start dying down when the cold weather comes out, so it makes my life a little bit easier. Far as Rankin County is concerned, our mosquitoes from September, first from last time I was in here till today, the numbers have been down. We've done a little bit of spraying, we've answered a few calls, some people' concerns in areas where they saw mosquitoes rise up, went out, took care of it. With this weather coming in with this cold front, I'm hoping it's going to stay. We should start seeing a lot less mosquitoes in the county and we'll start slowly stepping down till end of the season, ready to go enjoy our winter break. Do y'all have any questions for me?
No, sir.
All right, well, that's all I got. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
Next on my list is Mr. Freddie Harrell and Mr. Mike Smith with the Richland Creek Watershed Board. Come on up, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
Pleased to be here and hadn't been here in a while, but it's always a pleasure to be before all of our supervisors. And thank you, Bob, for that opening. You don't see that around the United States of America as much as you used to. Thank you very much. We're here this morning on behalf of the Richland Creek Watershed District Board. Right now, I'm the... I just told Jay, I'm the remnant of the board right now. But I have with me this morning, Mr. Mike Smith. He's an engineer that lives in the Richland area and he's going to do most of the presentation this morning. This will be very, very short, but just, we're not here to ask for money or anything like that. We're just here to bring you up to date on our thoughts. I was able to meet with Bob, Mara here in the last week or two and thank y'all and Bob again for having us here today on such short notice. What we have prepared, or what primarily Mike has prepared, and I signed a letter, we have prepared a request to Washington DC for some additional federal funding in the amount of approximately $46 million to go into the creek and in particular, that is, go into further development of the creek and to go into widening and rocking the creek and those kind of things. As you know, the creek primarily affects Brandon, Pearl, Richland, to maybe some extent Florence. But those being the primary areas. But you may or may not know, the Richland Creek was formed back in the 60s and it's been a matter of legal formation. It's a separate entity, legal entity, but nevertheless, we felt compelled that if this funding is granted, it would probably be the largest funding that's happened regarding the creek since the 60s. We just wanted to give you all the information about what our thoughts are. In the process, I have recently learned that this board is also becoming interested in drainage. If you know, it's... Growth in Rankin County has just been phenomenal, been fantastic, but with that has come additional stormwater runoff. And so, part of our plan is to do that. And since learning about this board's desire to look at the drainage in Rankin County from an overall comprehensive standpoint, we will give our presentation to your engineering firm, I believe it's Wagner, on that. But at any rate, I will now like to introduce to you Mike Smith. Mike is a professional engineer. He lives in Richland Creek Drainage District. They're in the area of Richland and if the board will permit me, I'll just let him come on up. He is hopefully destined by court appointment to be our next Richland Creek representative or commissioner. And then we'll have one more and we'll have a full three-man board. But at any rate, Mike, if you would, just come on up.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here with you.
Welcome.
I graduated from Florence in 1957 and I've been gone for about 60 years, so it's good to be back in Rankin County. So, my father was one of the initiators of forming the Richland Creek Watershed back in 1961. And Judge McLaurin and I went along with some of the representatives from the district of Washington in 1974 to get the first funding for a project down in Richland. Since that time, there have been millions of dollars that have been spent to make improvements to which have greatly relieved flooding in the area of Richland, Pearl, and certain parts of Brandon. I won't take but a few minutes to sort of tell you what we're doing, but...
Ready.
Are you going to put that?
Yeah.
Let's put that. It's okay if I go over and speak from there.
Sure.
Just to give you... Let's turn sideways. Or anybody, we got a glint or... In this request for funding, we were not able to get in there in time to get funding for this year, but we will be in line for when they start taking applications in March. Those funding... Our application will already be in place. We've gotten really strong support from the Senator.
Mr. Smith, hang on just a second, please, sir. We're going to get the microphone for you, so make sure it gets recorded for the meeting as well.
As I said, we've been getting real good support from our new senator and they're doing everything that's possible to see if we can get funding for next year. Basically, what we're doing is, this is the watershed map. This is north, of course. This is the Brandon area. This is the Richland area. This is the Pearl area. And these are two projects that are currently being worked on to try to make improvements to retard the flow that's coming south. As the development has occurred in the county, the amount of water that we're getting through the floodway is much greater than it was because of the lack of absorption into the ground. And also, this is where a biggest part of the restriction is, is down on the south end between Highway 49 and Pearl River. And so, our request for funding focuses on trying to open this up all the way up to Highway 18 and then carrying a flood... Building a floodway, clearing a floodway all the way up to where Channel 1 comes out of the shallow lake dams. So, that's just a brief synopsis of what we're trying to do. And we will be coming back to talk to you in more detail later, but this is a real good opportunity to get money because there's an increased emphasis on flooding projects and trying to prevent economic damage to areas. So, I think we'll have a good chance of getting some money next year and look forward to working with you on that.
What department are you seeking funds from?
It will be USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service in our CS.
Yes. What is... Where is that? Is that one... What's that? That's the one we did already, right?
Yes, this dam is already in place. That's down just the northeast of Thomasville. These two dams are over here on Shallow Road. This project right here was let last week to be the dam raised because of fear of flooding and blowing out the whole dam. So, there's a project left there. There's almost about $800,000 project that was left. That's the last money that's available for improvements.
Well, the last meeting that we had before the board moved on somewhat, the discussion was, there was a high-hazard dam. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
It'll be raised about three feet, that's what I recall, and special floodway put in so they can release the water more rapidly without damaging the dam.
Mike, we appreciate it. Any other questions?
I got one more. Who is it that appoints the board?
The...
Chance Record.
Chance Record?
Yeah.
Okay. You made that mention, I just didn't know who it was.
Yes, it's the Chance Record, the big core form. We're hoping to get a very knowledgeable and free engineer.
You're lucky with that.
I think that's going to be free of charge, too, right, Mike?
Oh, a special quote on the first.
Yeah. I might add, those two high-hazard dams, the federal government and environmental people have requested the board to raise these and strengthen them. They have been checked and double-checked by engineers and they're perfectly safe, but due to the increased amount of development all up and down the creek, the federal government has asked us to raise these and strengthen them. You know, there's two of them down in this area on Shallow Road. And so, they have become high-hazard dams just due to the increased development in the county. Not that they're weakened, but they are very strong and they've been checked yearly as they are, but we're going to make them even stronger. Thank you.
Thank you all, bud.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Warren, come on up.
Paul wanted to apologize for not being able to be here today. He had continuing education class and I wondered why he felt like he needed to go to continuing education class. Were working with me 20 years, you'd think he'd know enough, but...
Well, if it's anything like me, he waits to the last minute to get it before the license gets written in, so he has no choice.
It just depends on what you've been teaching.
I think Craig and Ms. Laura has this copy, don't you? Don't you have a copy? And if you'll look, I put the book in there, but the first page, the loose page, is sort of like y'all like me to do, is streamlining, go through the coverages and recommendations we have on the insurance. And as you can see, the first line is the property insurance. The rate is actually down a little bit, very, very competitive. Now, this is one line that we did actually get a outside insurance company, Ross and Yerger quoted. They were unable to fill the whole bill on the property and general liability, but they were not competitive with a renewal quote in any way. So, we recommend staying with Stephen Wallace, One Beacon. And as you can see, you've been with them several years. Now, the automobile, this may raise a few questions. You've currently been with FCCI for the last several years and one of the main attractions to that company is they do not recognize the statute that the state puts in where they don't have to pay claims. FCCI steps up and pays any type of claims involving an emergency vehicle. Travelers does recognize the statute and they will not add that coverage onto their quote. Now, they were very competitive, so I went back to Dean Kirby in Wellington and said, "In all fairness, you let FCCI have an opportunity to quote it without that additional coverage." And as you can see, the price dropped dramatically. And the reason that is, is that's a very important coverage that a lot of companies will not offer, which travelers will not offer. And we did have other quotes that were not even in the ballgame, so I just listed the main ones. The renewal...
So, the number one, the 376 is as is what we have today?
And it's actually a lower rate than it was last year. The increase is strictly due to more vehicles.
All right.
But the rate itself is lower even with that special coverage. And I think as a PR, you know, I think it'd be well worth it and I think the sheriff can attest to that.
Well, it's not really secret. It's, I mean, it's for us to keep our officers at bay and run in somebody, where we will be responsible rather than taking the easy way out and saying we're indemnified and...
Immune.
Immune.
You're exactly right.
The next line is the general liability, which the rates are the same. It's strictly going up to the expenditures. That's how they base the premium, but the rate's actually the same as it was last year. And that's, again, that's a part of a package deal with general liability and property through Stephen Wallace. The volunteer fire department is just a blessing. We've had, as y'all know, we've had some pretty bad claims. The rate is up a hair, but not anything to speak of. The average rate per unit is $1,432 and this is a guaranteed replacement cost. It's just, it went up like $105 per unit even regarding all the claims that we've had there.
Wow.
So, our recommendation is option A. And again, everything is pretty well stayed with your current companies. And that's another sign that, because they've shopped it hard. I mean, we had other quotes. Stephen Wallace actually turned in three other quotes from different companies and there was absolutely no comparison in the premiums. Y'all got any more questions for...
The mayor here, Brandon, told me about their dropping fire rating from five to a four.
Yeah, we did. We did check that, which already had... We were maxed out.
Okay.
I mean, he was maxed out. I got the email and I forwarded it straight on Stephen Wallace and called and had a phone conversation, but there was no more credits that they could allow to give, so...
Okay, that's fine. I'll go make sure that that was recognized.
Hey, Guy, if you don't mind, explain to me a little more just on the... You said you had another bid that came in from Ross and Yerger.
Ross and Yerger.
Yeah, can you walk me through?
It was Graham Fairly and did a very good job on it and talked with them extensively and through it. There's not a whole lot of companies, and when you get to such competitive rates, and I know you look at it and think, "That's a lot of money," but you've got a lot of stuff, you know? The average rate on, say, your vehicles is like $1,000. I mean, I guarantee you, each one of you paying more than that for your personal car. I know I am. But we're talking about property. They quoted property and the property and general liability normally are packaged together.
What was their quote, do you know, off the top of your head?
Well, actually, the property is all I got. And see, and One Beacon wasn't right, just the general liability, so they kind of threw it out for them being unable to offer a general liability quote, but on their property, they were like $3,000 more then, so they was probably $162 to $3,000. I can get that and show you that actual quote. But again, it was a mute point because One Beacon would not write just the general liability if they would have been awarded the property.
Okay.
And the other company wouldn't do it at all.
The other company wouldn't do it at all?
They wouldn't not write the general liability. They did not, or they did not offer us a general liability quote.
Any other questions? Guy, we appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate y'all. If y'all need anything or have any questions, as you go to looking through your book in more detail, you know to call us and we'll get with you or whatever.
Yeah, I'll worry about a study on that later.
Appreciate it, Guy. Moving on to number four, old business, and there are motions to approve the minutes of the 27th and October 1st.
We'll move.
Motion, Mr. Morris, and a second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Set agenda.
We'll move.
Mr. Morris and a second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Ms. Fordenberry, come on up.
In your package, you have the required year-end report from my office that includes insolvent and delinquent taxpayer report, the listing of outstanding checks returned for insufficient funds, and the list of surrendered tax from October 1, 2017 to September 30, 2018.
Motion, prove.
Motion, Mr. Morris, and a second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Bee, please, ma'am.
Authority to pay the 2018-19 MAKEUP membership dues for myself in the amount of $1,000 and this is, includes the registration fees for the two conferences.
We'll move.
Motion, Mr. Morris, and a second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Oster, would you do Mr. Sullivan? He's not going to be here today, I'm told.
I will. It's the approval of the final resolution for ad valorem exemptions for the 2018 tax year, and you can see them here, General Recycling, Nucor Steel, International Paper Company, HAB, or HEV, however they say it, Rocket, FedEx, Ground Packaging, and the GI Associates.
Motion, prove, Mr. Cross. Second vote himself. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I thought we were going to...
For 2018. All right. One year. Got you. All right.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Ms. Bridget.
And we're getting along that, though.
Huh?
Our policy to tighten up our...
Right.
Yeah.
Our giveaway.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first bids we have to open this morning are for collection of household hazardous waste. The first proposal is from Trey B. It was received electronically.
Pleasure.
Act like I'm short. There you go. The second proposal received is from Care Environmental. I recommend they be taken under advisement.
We'll move.
Motion, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Bee, please, ma'am.
The next bids are for semi-annual, I mean, it's annual asphalt, sorry, habits.
Have you had a reverse auction yet?
No, not yet. We have one coming up.
We still have hope that this coming year, our legislature will see fit to overdo that, overturn that little law.
All right. The first bid for the asphalt is from APAC. Item number one, they bid $94. Item two, $94.65. Item three, $4. Item four, $57. Item five, $65. Item six, $55. Item seven, $62. And that's for the plant address for the FOB from the Jackson office.
Four, seven?
Sixty-two.
Yeah, sixty-two.
And this one is also from APAC. This is for their Canton plant. Item four, $59.50. Item five, $68. Item six, $57. This bid is from Dickerson and Bowen. Item one, $96. Item two, $90. Item three, $3.15. Item four, $59. Item five, $60.50. Item six, $59. This bid is from AdCamp. Item one, $81. Item two, $83.25. Item three, $2.85. Item four, $55. Item five, $58. Item six, $53. Item seven, $54.80.
I'll say, somebody's hungry. Yeah, but they don't get to it once you give them a job. Yeah, you got a good price, you just can't give it laid down.
This bid is from AJ Construction. Item one, $88. Item two, $93.78. And item three, $3.75.
Who was that?
AJ Construction.
I like to my tornado.
This bid's from W.E. Blainen Sons. They bid item four, it's for their Morton plant address, $62. Item five, $72. Item six, $59. And item seven, $66.
Mike, can you answer that?
I think we both do. This bid is from Blackledge Emulsions. These will be on page two of the bid worksheet. It's item eight, CRS 2, $2.36 per gallon.
Who is this?
Blackledge Emulsions. And item nine, $2.80 per gallon.
Who was the person, 230 what?
236.
And who was the second?
We're going to end up bruised up here. This bid is from Ergon. Item eight, $1.40 per gallon. Item nine, $1.73. Item 10, $3.20. Item 11, $2.11. I recommend those be taken under advisement.
Motion, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bridget. Oh, I'm sorry, we're just... That was just the asphalt. We're still thinking it on my part.
The next item is for scrub seal, slurry seal, and micro-surfacing. We received one bid from TL Wallace.
Okay, well, one bid, okay.
Yes.
From who?
Item one, they bid $2.45. Item two, $2.35. Item three, $2.45. And item four, $2.55. Recommend that be taken under advisement.
We'll move.
Motion, Mr. Cross. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Next, please, ma'am.
The next is for crushed aggregates. We received the first bid, we're just going to call these out without the numbers unless y'all want me to. The first bid was received electronically from Green Dream. The next bid is from Warren Paving. The last bid is from White Sands. I recommend those be taken under advisement.
Motion, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Next, please, ma'am.
The next bids are for gravel. First bid received is from Grand's Gravel Hauling Services. Second bid is from White Sands. I recommend those be taken under advisement.
We'll move.
Motion, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Next, please, ma'am.
The next bids are metal culverts. The first bid received is from GNO Supply. This bid is received, was received from KEDCO. This bid is recei- was received from KEDCO. This bid is from Coburn Supply Company. And the final bid is from Southern Pipe. I recommend those be taken under advisement.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries.
The next bid is for polypropylene culverts. First bid is from GNO Supply. Second bid is from KEDCO. Hope I'm saying that properly correctly. This bid is from Coburn Supply. Final bid is from Southern Pipe and Supply. I recommend those be taken under advisement.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bridget.
If there are any vendors in here, I'm gonna take these back to my office if y'all wanna come look at them.
Mr. Harrison, you're up.
Thank y'all. Uh, they do request the, for approval AT&amp;T utility permits to be constructed a fiber cable right along and across Holly Bush Road, though between Highway 25 and McLorme Circle.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries. B please sir.
Uh, I'd like to take B through E together. They all same company. Nobody has a problem.
Motion approved by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries. Anything else?
Thank y'all.
Ms. Parker.
Thank you, sir. First item that I have on the agenda is Holly Ridge, which is in District 4. I'm recommending approval of that final flat.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries. B, please sir.
Next item is North Shore Landing, Phase 2. And I'm recommending approval of those construction drawings.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries. C please sir.
C is Valley Brook, which is in District 1. I'm recommending approval of those construction drawings.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries. D please sir.
Thank you, item D, Oak Grove Drainage Improvements. I'm recommending approval of paper request number two, in the amount of $117,497.33 to JWB Construction, Inc., and authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion?
I just would like for Chris Bass to call me today, so I'm gonna update on where we are.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries. Next please.
Thank you, item E, Holly Bush Road Improvements. I'm recommending approval of paper request number five, in the amount of $48,668 to Southern Rock LLC, and authority to issue that check.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker. Mr. Schley.
Item A is the continuation of the public hearing on the Judy and Danny Hall nuisance property. We'll open that public hearing again. One item of update, you guys will recall that in our initial consideration of this, there were multiple issues at play, both on our Community Development Office side and on the Fire Department's side. We took the life, safety, and health issues first and foremost, those primarily involved the Fire Department. We really appreciate the Reservoir Fire Department's swift response to this and their active involvement in addressing and assessing the situation. And I also want to report to the board that as of yesterday afternoon, we received a report from Deputy Chief White, who gave us an update that almost every item of life, safety, health issue that was a primary concern of the Fire Department has been addressed, corrected. Good engagement on all of that. There's one item left that is in process, and that is installing a sprinkler system in this dwelling. And so that is ongoing. That work is already underway. And so it's just a product of getting some time. So the hearing is open. If the board has, on the basis of that report right there, if the board has any additional information that it wishes to acquire about the life, safety, health issues from the Fire Department representatives of the Reservoir Fire here, if you have any questions, you're welcome to ask those. Obviously, I don't wanna get in front of that. I know that Ms. Hall is here. So what I would suggest, Daniel, I'm looking at you, this is affecting your district primarily, but my thought process is, we gave Ms. Hall additional time to get these life, safety, health issues addressed. She did that. We asked for a revisiting of the issue today. The report is that all of the issues that we were concerned about, with the exception of the sprinklers, have been handled. So I don't know that there's really anything else for us to address today on the Fire Department's side. So I'm gonna get that closed out first. Any questions on that?
Yeah, and I wanna echo exactly what you said in regards to the Fire Department and to Ms. Hall. Both have been working very diligently over the last several weeks to get those things addressed. And it's not an easy thing to do to get a lot of those up to code. And Ms. Hall, I'll be commended for getting that done, and I definitely appreciate her. Also the work with the Fire Department, Scott Berry, and White, and all those guys there. I really appreciate those guys and efforts. It's really gonna make a difference in the people that are there. The only other thing I would like to ask is that once we, I know she's in the process of getting the sprinkler system set up. It's kind of the same process in regards to this, for the follow-up meeting, just to ensure we get all that in place, and then we can get it back on the record that it's there and done. Would be my only suggestion on that point. Just upon the sprinkler system in place, installed, inspected, we come right back here just on the end of the month to say, hey, look, for the record, it's done, it's all set. And we go from there. So that'd be the only thing I'd ask, if that's okay.
I think Willis should do that.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you. Scott blesses it, we're good.
Our next meeting, for the purpose of the board, in terms of looking ahead, November the 1st is our, is our actual, actually our next meeting. I know that seems a little odd, but that's the Thursday before the first Monday. And so that will be our, that'll be our planning commission meeting as well as our work meeting. So if the board is of a mind to do so, we could set a renewal and revisiting of the issue. And it's also give time for Ms. Hall to work with our Community Development folks to make sure that we address any other issues.
Will they give her enough time for the sprinkler?
Ms. Hall, do you have any sort of...
They're doing it right now.
Okay, so it appears as though the sprinkler system may be a closed loop as of the November 1 meeting. But that would be our first opportunity, of course, to receive confirmation of that. I would suggest that we just set it for the 1st and revisit that one lone issue. And again, it'll give an opportunity for Community Development then to start addressing some of the Community Development side of these. If that's acceptable to the board, that's what we would do. Any issue with seeing y'all again on the 1st?
Need a motion from me on that?
Yes, sir, if you will, we would, we'd just simply continue the hearing.
Before we move on and separate to and all that, why not go and start addressing our issues now? Rather than, are they...
And that's what I'm proposing, during the period of time now, from now through the 1st. We've wanted to get the fire safety issues addressed, but now we can begin whittling on this. My hope would be, as of the 1st, Jay, that we will hear a report from Community Development that there has been progress on some of those other issues.
Everything's been identified, everybody knows what needs to be done. I got you.
There may need to be some additional clarity on a few points, but we really were focused on the fire safety, so that kind of took a backseat. Out of fairness to these guys, now that we've got the fire thing out of the way, let's let them start really revisiting and focusing on that. So that'd be on the 1st. Daniel, that would be the motion then to go on the 1st.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion?
In fact, a few weeks ago, Ms. Hall said that there was a law enforcement, a member of law enforcement that was planning to move in and would be there and also act as security. Has that happened?
I actually interviewed someone, and that's the... You know, it's just, we have to have the right person and the right mix. And of course, that would mean a permanent resident, and it wouldn't be a function of the town at that point. But I'm sure that's something that can be worked out.
No, I mean, I'm just, from the number of responses that they have to make and the problems that can go on in a hotel-type situation, a security person would be good, I think.
Any other comments on that? Did we get, did we vote on it?
All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Schley.
Yes, sir. Item B is simply kind of, it was a kind of a placeholder for you guys. We had initially discussed this heavy haul ordinance. And I wanted to give you an opportunity to see an updated version of this. That is, again, it would be applicable countywide. I think that's the most important aspect of it that you guys need to understand and to hear and consider. So it would be applicable countywide. It would, it would apply to platted subdivisions. I wanna be very careful and clear. It would apply to platted subdivisions across, they would, in unincorporated Rankin County. That's the scope of where it would apply. This would give a tool in the tool bag of our road department and our law enforcement to be able to address more tightly compacted residential settings that don't get a lot of heavy traffic to begin with, where heavy traffic, for whatever reason, heavy haul traffic is there, mostly construction-related. There are, occasionally, there would be timber hauling operations, even in those settings. We've seen that before. Robin Hood comes to mind as an example, where you've got significant timber tracks that are bordering heavily populated residential settings. So this is, this would be available as a tool to help us stay on top of that. So I wanted to, all this is for is just, is to put it back in front of you, give you an opportunity to pour back through it, look at it. And then when we come back, I would propose, when we come back on the 1st, if you've got questions, if you wanna have a significant discussion, we'll have everybody front and center to have that talk. Okay, is everybody okay with doing that on the 1st?
Can you email me the final version of it?
Yes, yes.
I'll share that with the home builders.
We'll make sure you get a digital version that you can forward on.
Good.
Thank you.
We okay with that? Alright. The next item I am seeing is a discussion of the November election. As you guys know, we had received some instructions from above suggesting to us about the operation of the November election, how it would be conducted. We've gone through sort of a, an understanding amongst ourselves of the division of responsibility within the election, the universe of the election. Who is responsible for what? You guys are responsible for a really limited part of that. I wanted to, again, discuss that with you. Primarily, you guys are responsible for making sure we've got places where election activity can take place, polling places. You guys define the precinct boundaries, and that's generally done on the basis of the population. That's generally done on the basis of communities and keeping communities together. And it's also, there's also an element of budgeting and cost and other things that go with it. As the more precincts you have, the more equipment you have, the more staffing you have, all of that kind of stuff. So y'all are really responsible for the places, the precincts themselves. Y'all make sure we have good election equipment, and that it's available and working. And that is about the extent of your responsibility. One component part of that is that your, our particular election equipment has extra bells and whistles with it that most others don't. One of the bells that we have is the ability for unofficial election results to be transmitted back to Election Central from the polling place. And that uses wireless technology. It's encrypted, and so the data itself is not subject to being spoiled, hacked, viewed, whatever. But you're, there are some issues associated with that that we need to address. And so it's been put to you guys, since y'all control the equipment itself. You guys have the ability to turn the button that allows the wireless transmission to occur. Y'all can turn that off or on. It's your call on that. You guys have the agreement with Verizon to provide that service. And so it's really up to y'all to just make that decision. You've gotten a notification that was directed to your election commissioners. Their responsibility is to conduct the election. So all issues related to who's gonna be at the polling places, how they get trained, how they function and utilize equipment, how they interact with voters, all of that's election commissioner and election worker stuff. That's not us. Circuit clerk is responsible for ballots, for notifications to the voters, where the voters are supposed to go vote, the voter rolls, the issue of collecting, housing, storing the equipment in concert with the election commissioners, and all of the election-related data. Who's on the poll pads? Who actually is an eligible voter? That is, that is in concert, Circuit Clerk, election commissioners, they work together in tandem on that. She's also responsible for coding the election, getting the ballots together, making sure that they're on the right kind of paper, that they're compliant, that they coordinate with what the Secretary of State's office has in terms of data, downloading and pulling that data. You need, what else you want, Oak Grove?
No, that's a good, I... It's always been a very murky situation, and nobody's ever actually sat down and said, this is who's responsible for what.
I'm grateful for things like this coming up, so that we all have an opportunity to sort of rehearse division of responsibility and who is responsible for what. Okay? So you guys have the on-off button on the wireless technology.
Bottom line though, all the bucks come from here.
Ain't no doubt about it. Yep, so now we understand a little bit better what the division of responsibility is, Steve. The truth of the matter is, nobody cares about that, and it doesn't really matter who is supposed to be responsible. You guys are looked at as in charge of that whole deal. You can't get away from that.
So that brings us to...
Go ahead.
Which is why I'm standing here talking to you guys about what are we, what are we gonna do about this stuff?
You hadn't explained really that we've been told or asked at elections not to use our wireless.
That's right. Speaking of division of responsibility, all of this comes under the umbrella of our Secretary of State's office that is in charge of monitoring and enforcing what is known as the statewide election law. And there are rules that election commissioners have to follow in the conduct of the election. They go along with, that's, that's the big umbrella and border around all of this. And while the Secretary of State is responsible for enforcing that law, Steve, they, they do not and will not intrude on what is election matters that are local in nature. And there is not a law on the books that discusses transmission of unofficial election results by wireless. It's just not addressed. Technology moves more quickly than the legislature can keep up with sometimes, and it's just a product of modern day life. And so that's what we find. We're in one of those situations where there has been, this is not gonna surprise anyone, there's been a lot of talk about election integrity and the safety... there's been a lot of talk about election integrity and the, the safety of our election system, and having that set up so that it cannot be hacked
Compromised.
or compromised, or any other nefarious activity associated with it, so that we preserve the integrity of the election results. So people can trust that the way that the voting was handled was in a way that is an actual reflection of the will of the people and not some outside influence. And I think the truth of the matter is that that's gotten awful lot of publicity and activity in the press, and that there, that there are concerns now that are being expressed that simply don't line up with reality. The truth of the matter is that our equipment is exceedingly secure. It's not connected to the internet at all. Let me repeat that. Our election equipment is not connected to the internet at all.
Or any other network.
Or any other network. It is a direct, there is a direct line of communication of actual aggregated results from a, from a piece of equipment that is at a polling precinct, one piece of equipment that transmits via cell phone to Election Central. Aggregated results, not individual results, aggregated results that then come in and are combined with other precincts that are reporting similarly, and that gives us the ability to turn around results that would reflect seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five percent of the total voter tally in an unofficial setting, right? But it's, it's designed to give us a rapid response of voting in Rankin County. There are two counties in the state that have this capability, that utilize this capability. Us in DeSoto. We understand that DeSoto intends to ignore the Secretary of State's instructions, suggestions, and recommendations, and proceed to utilize their equipment in the manner that they purchased it and in the manner that they told the election equipment provider they wanted, paid for dearly. They're going, they're going to go ahead and continue to transmit. This was as of two days ago.
Okay. Yesterday afternoon, I had a conversation with Vanessa Lynch, the county administrator, and one of the supervisors, and I'm sorry, I don't remember her name. They were a little bit on the opposite side of the fence from Ms. Dale Thompson, that is the circuit clerk. The election, I mean, the supervisor that I talked to, they were leaning a little bit more toward not doing it. The circuit clerk is of the opinion, they should do it, just like Craig said, they feel totally safe, they feel that their network is totally secure, and they find that there is no reason to not do it at this time. They don't meet until Monday, so...
Why would he, why would it be asked or suggested that we not, if there was not some thought that might be a possible problem?
Yeah. So there's no underlying explanation that we have received either officially or unofficially from the Secretary of State, at least not conversations that I've had and not, not communications, written communications that I've seen. There's been no underlying explanation beyond this. It has always been our recommendation, our being Secretary of State, that counties not utilize equipment that is, that allows for transmission electronically of voter results. That, that is from the legal division of Secretary of State's office in the elections department. It, it has always been our policy that we, that's what we communicate. We would prefer that you not do that.
You think he knows the only two counties doing it?
Yes, sir. They know that.
But, I mean, with that said, we got advice through his office, and I'm not going to say names, but with liaison, that recommended the equipment we bought.
Right.
And we paid a lot more money for it to be able to do this. And before, we were one of the last counties in the state because we have a big population and a lot of precincts, trying to get our numbers in, and the very same people were saying, what's wrong with y'all?
So we, we were using, and we, this is not, I'm, I'm not saying anything that hasn't already been said before in, in this, in front of this body in, in a public meeting. Our prior equipment had gotten a lot of age on it. It was antiquated. And so we saw that the speed with which we could turn election results around was hampered by our technology. And so I think it was important for this board, and we spent a lot of time in our RFP analyzing how quickly can we turn results around. It was one of the priority items that you guys looked at. How fast can we get our results turned around? And so it was absolutely no secret to anyone that was paying attention that we were very impressed and put a lot of weight on election equipment providers that could deliver on fast results service. I, I dare say that if we had been told at that point in time that our recommendation would be that you not have a device that is subject to transmission of unofficial results, that would have changed the dynamics completely. It may have even resulted in a different choice as it relates to the RFP, so...
Yeah, because there was another Dominion had a good product that did an offer that service, and
Correct.
that was one with the garbage can tub thing.
Yes. And I think those guys finished either third or fourth.
I hate to go against what he suggested.
So...
Asking.
Can I just talk turkey real quick? There, there has been an awful lot in the news. You got to live under a rock not to have been made aware. There's a lot of talk about outside influences in election results, even to the point where there's speculation that the results themselves have been subject to manipulation by an, a foreign country.
Have any of them come to fruition? Have they found any place?
To my knowledge, no. There's been no evidence of that. I think there may have been some, some evidence that voter rolls may have been messed with from an outside source, but I don't know that they've ever been identified. And certainly, the election results themselves, there's been no evidence of any of that, Steve. But this is a response, I think this is a response, the, the letter that we got from Secretary of State's office, I believe is a response to, to the perception that may be there, that voter results could possibly be hacked or compromised, and that out of an abundance of caution, we would hope that you wouldn't open yourself up to even that possibility.
Let me ask you this, sir. After, let's just say we thought something might be tainted or something might not be legit. We do have the ability to go back and physically check those results as they come in because they're coming in over paper ballot.
Yeah, we absolutely do. You're exactly right. You have the paper ballots.
So if we thought we were questioned, or at some point, if the results were questioned at all, we have the ability to go back and
Yeah.
use the old ground system method.
Absolutely.
And handcuffs.
Let's be even more clear and direct, Daniel. The transmission that occurs is for speed purposes only. It is labeled unofficial.
Right.
It is publicized unofficial. It's not official until the election commissioners have gone through the ballots themselves and are satisfied
Right.
that the paper ballots reflects what's there.
So it has to match.
Got to match.
Exactly.
So, I think we all feel the same, that we got great service capability pulling off the election, but none of us want to go against our sitting Secretary of State.
I would like something that gives us better instructions instead of encourages us, says either you should or you should not. Shall.
Yeah. Well, Steve, I think what we've gotten is you should not. We don't have a you shall not, but what we do have is a, is a reply to my question, can you give me a shall not?
That's a gray area. That's a gray area.
Sorry, I can't give you a shall not. And the truth of the matter is, back to the division of responsibility, the Secretary of State is not legally allowed to mandate how a local political subdivision is carrying out its election responsibility. They can't demand or, they can't even carry us to Chancery Court and sue us to stop us.
But if something does, then they say, I told you, I told you, absolutely not.
So let me, let me, let's, let's get down to the bottom line. What am I asking you? I, I'm asking you guys, are you going to push the off switch or are you going to leave it on? It's currently on, what's on, the Verizon service that's available through the modems. That's currently in the on position. The question before you today is, do you want your staff to turn it off?
Is that really us or the election?
That's y'all.
It's not our...
Election commissioners do not control the Verizon contract. That's a contract between board supervisors and Verizon to provide the wireless service.
If we turn it off, what is the, what's it really going, what's it going to create? Just slower result?
They'll have to drive the results.
Yeah.
Get in the car and drive down here.
We'll be waiting on those outlier precincts to get their, to get their stick money on.
Money on this million dollars.
We wasted.
We wasted from this one.
If you push the off button, you have completely taken the ability of the election commissioners away to decide whether or not they're going, they are going to use the wireless transmission service as a part of the election itself.
Of course, it's up to them still.
It is.
Even if we decide to leave it on, they may say, no.
That's correct.
Headache, and, but, you know, I, personally, I wouldn't mind cutting it off this one time if I knew it was just one time.
Once I...
But I don't think that's going to be the end though, because really, this is a small election in terms of everything else. In terms, next year, we got the state election, then we got the presidential election, and so either we are or we're not.
I, I expect this to resurface in 2020.
Yeah.
I would be, I would be okay on shutting it off if we didn't have the means of getting our results validated and then turned in to be sure it's right. If that was the only route you had was to go over the airways and send it out, and you never know whether it was right or not, that's one thing. But we don't have that situation. We've got the situation, oh, you're, you're going to send a nonofficial result over the airways, and then our offices are going to validate those numbers to be sure they match. So you're, so you're checking to see if you were compromised at some point. So you're going to catch it if it happens. It's not like you're going to have an illegal election.
We get that, but doesn't he know that?
It's just political.
But I mean, we get that part, but doesn't, doesn't he know that? Anywhere of that?
It's perception.
Yeah.
So there is a perception that this is not secure.
We have those real ballots in a box that we count. He might not. I don't know.
Yes, sir. They know. They absolutely know.
I know Madeline knows. She's the one suggesting the equipment.
You said you weren't going to say that.
No, I mean, I know she's...
I'm sorry, Steve. It's public record.
Madeline is aware of the equipment.
Yeah. So we just need, we need you guys to tell us, are we leaving it on or are we turning it off? I don't know that the cost savings to us is significant.
But turn it on, right?
Yeah, turn it it off, going ahead and communicating that we're turning it off. We're, we're paying to have that service available for a period of time. I think it's six months. Am I right? I think it's like a six-month window that we have it available. Then they allow us to turn that off, so we're not paying for 12 months when we only need it for just a little, small period of time. If we don't tell them to turn it off, we're getting charged for it being available. The cost savings is not significant either way.
In the primaries that we've had, how did it work this year, just, just the last few months?
It worked really well for the precincts where we had adequate cell service.
There's a couple of very low percentage that has no cell. But as, in, as equipment and transmitting these numbers, did we feel compromised in any way, or did anybody bring anything to us?
I've heard nothing, no report of any kind, other than, other than excitement about how quickly the unofficial results were available. Within fifteen minutes of polls closing, we knew, I think it was in, it was in one of the elections where it was countywide. We only had one, am I right? Okay. I, I believe the report was that over forty-five precincts successfully transmitted unofficial results. That's out of fifty.
So ninety percent.
Ninety percent successfully transmitted within fifteen minutes of poll closing. By seven fifteen, they had forty-five, if I recall correctly, forty-five precinct results unofficially already in hand.
Which would be enough for somebody to know if they going to win the election.
This could be a controversial, potentially could have some controversy in this one, that's the only thing.
So if you guys decide...
You got, you got, you're not on a network, you know? It's a random transmission. I mean, every, every precinct's going to do it at a different time because when they get wrapping up, they're going to hit that button, boom, it's gone. There's no way for anybody to, to dissect it and pull it off. We paid for it, you know?
It's encrypted. The data itself is encrypted. You have to have a key.
We've got the paper ballots to, to verify if there's any dispute or disparity in the number.
The inflammatory thing is they recommended this equipment to us. Their office recommended this. And we paid a lot more money.
Yeah. So I think it's clear that we never heard, whether we quibble over recommended or not, as if it was an active, you have to go with this, without regard to that. We can quibble over that.
The bells and whistles.
Absolutely. We can quibble over how strongly it was recommended versus this, you know, this is an okay option. We never heard, and, and I'll defy anyone to show me anywhere, we never heard, you don't need this kind of equipment because it's not recommended. We'd never heard that. One other thing, to Bob's point, all those features that you just described and discussed is 100% accurate, but for full, complete, on-the-table disclosure and transparency, the only part of that system that we don't control, that's not really associated with any decision that this board would make, is the actual wireless carrier's transmission network. Okay? We, we don't know how safe Verizon's network is, and we can't 100% absolutely guarantee that somebody cannot intercept from that side.
Okay. They intercepted, they changed the numbers. We still have the information.
Within three days, we're going to be able to say, no, that's wrong, when we count the ballots.
Something's hinky.
You got the hard copy. You got the hard copy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll know that night.
I, I don't know how they de-encrypt, manipulate, re-encrypt
Random.
and send
Yeah.
all within a millisecond. I don't know how you do that.
And we could use AT&amp;T. Or Verizon, or, or C-Spy.
Yeah, the reason we're with Verizon is because they allowed this
Well, we...
six-month window on off, and we felt like a little bit better service. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I would like to get back with the other county, DeSoto, which is just two of us that have this, and us acting units. I mean, act together. I mean, let's work with them.
I, I don't know that it does us any good to wait, unfortunately, Steve, because the on/off question I'm talking about with Verizon, if, if we wait until the 27th, I'm sorry, until the 1st, you're, you're too close to the election for that to make any difference.
Well...
Because the service, if we cut the service off, at that point, we're not going to get any credit for it being off during the same winter, it'll already be November 1st.
I'm just talking about doing it.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Personally, I'm for us, I, I make up my own decision. I don't need DeSoto to really...
I agree. I don't either.
It would be nice if it was...
I mean, I would like to talk and work. If they have a reason that they're going to turn theirs off, I'd like to hear it.
Their reason probably same as ours.
Well, that's...
Because seriously, they wouldn't have bought their piece of equipment if they didn't have faith in it.
Probably need to be that road, too.
And they just bought theirs the same time we bought ours. And they're two different vendors. I don't know, man.
I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to make about switching the hold off.
Well, you need a motion to cut it off, otherwise we move on, right?
Yes, sir.
We can't, we can't wait to see what, see what DeSoto County's doing?
Yeah, unless you guys tell your staff, and I think it needs to be through an action of the board, to shut that off, it'll just be on.
Okay, what's their, what's our staff? What do they, have they got input on it, the election commissioners?
I know that they met, Jared. I, I don't know what decision was made, if any. They haven't reported that.
But election commissioners can turn, but turn it off, I mean, right? I mean, they can, they can come behind us, say, no, we're not gonna do it.
My point is, well, I do want to get that there, sometimes I, I don't know, I like to hear some of their input because here, there, there are the election commissioners, even though they don't make some of these decisions, they still need me, still need to be involved.
They 100% know that's their decision whether not to do this or not. They know it's up to them. That we, that they're the final say.
Well, let's just leave it that way.
But they're also, you know, gonna go on what we want. I feel like they would work with us either way.
Well, I hadn't heard what they, I hadn't heard from them either.
Well, this is all new and I know they were meeting Monday or Tuesday night to discuss it.
This past Monday, Tuesday?
Yeah.
I mean, if you take politics out of it, we don't have a discussion. We bought some really nice equipment that, as far as we know, is secure and works better than anything we've ever had. And our population is growing so much. People already don't like the standing lines at the polls and we took care, hopefully we taking care of that. Then they get home and they gotta wait till midnight to see if their grandson or nephew is winning something.
But that's why it's gonna be all.
Well, it's worse when you have a high population.
I, I think they're waiting.
Somebody makes a motion second.
We don't, we don't need to make, do anything then.
Yeah, we can just leave it all.
Oh, and we can come back November 1st.
I don't need action for y'all not to do anything.
Okay.
Just need to tell me that that's what y'all, y'all are not going.
I'm gonna leave it alone.
Leave it on me.
Anything else, Mr. Slade, in there?
Nothing else at this point.
Yes, we, we do have, well.
We got some more stuff coming though, I think, that's coming down the road.
Okay.
Slade said nothing at this point.
We're, yeah, at Mr. Slade's point of word. Uh, Ms. Oster, sure, sure.
Thank you. The first item I have is the approval of the amended FY 2018 budget.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, B, please, ma'am.
Next item is discussion of, well, we've had our discussion. It's the action on awarding the county insurance with the renewal date of November the 1st and that's for county property insurance with one beacon, um, auto insurance with Dean Kirby through Wellington and FCCI, general liability with one beacon, that's insurance associates, and our fire services with Wellington through AAIC and authority to sign the documents and issue those checks.
Motion approved.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, next, please, ma'am.
Authority to publish the public notice to conduct an open test of the Verity scanner and touch, uh, writing voting devices for the Rankin County election equipment vault at, uh, 600 Marquette Road behind Region 8 office and that will be November 2nd, beginning at 9:00 a.m.
Motion by myself. Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, next, please, ma'am.
Authority to accept the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Program grant award for youth court in the amount of $352,611 and that will be over a period of three years.
Motion by myself, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, next, please, ma'am.
Authority to purchase one used 2016 Ford Police Interceptor utility in the amount of $18,950 from Missouri Highway Patrol for the Sheriff's Department from their FY, uh, 2019 budget and, uh, Ken McBroom and Deputy Johnny Overby will go pick up the vehicle and pay any travel related expenses.
That's approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion?
Yeah, what kind of truck, vehicle? Same Ford?
2016 Ford.
We're buying all the Explorer from me.
So we moved to Fords now, huh?
Well, we had to when they went up on the Tahoe.
Yeah.
They jumped the price up a little, but this year the Tahoe and Explorer, exact same price. I'm buying all the Fords, saving $10,000 vehicle from Missouri. Now buying new Tahos, old Tahos.
Irish from here, I got you. All right, thank you.
I forgot where I was with the.
Ready.
Ready, ready to vote?
First and second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, next, please, ma'am.
Uh, approval to accept an amended Exhibit A of the 2018-19 school law enforcement interlocal agreement as prior approved on October the 1st and authority for the board president to sign. You know, we had two schools now. I think there are six. Seven? Okay, maybe seven now.
You gotta think, add on that?
Uh, this, this will be adding a lot of dates. I don't know how fast I'm gonna be able to figure out the position with, uh, but right now I'm looking at hiring nine certified officers at the sheriff's office. Just trying to find the right people. It's gonna take a while. So I don't know how fast you're gonna be able to get it in the schools, but, um.
That's probably, that's because, that's because some municipalities didn't want to participate.
Right, yeah, plus the additional ones that I'm doing too, also just to specify the issue, uh, what they're dealing with, Chief, uh, um, Florence. I, I had eight positions, Lord, but I gave up one of them, uh, to Florence. They're gonna put their own person at the high school now and I'm moving that person out to a school in the county.
Yeah, I heard, I heard one was coming there.
So I should be able to absorb all the equipment, the, the $50,000 piece we're getting for them, so everything else I should be able to.
Why in the world municipalities just wouldn't keep doing their own? Just threw it off on us.
The buzz comes for me, I'm gonna take care of it, you know, we're gonna have people there. It's just gonna be a matter of getting, finding the right person.
Right.
There are motion to approve, motion, Mr. Cross, second by myself, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Ms. Oster, moving on to additional business. I see discussion of website redesign.
Yes, Marcus is here. Um, I've given him all the contact information with E-Gov. You know, we have contracted with them to do an update and a redesign of it and, uh, I think he needs some, he's ready to proceed and needs some directive from y'all. What are you looking for in this?
A whole new look. Surprise us.
I think they wanted a, uh, more, uh, what was it? You wanted to, were they use a drone video?
Okay.
It wasn't me, yeah, it was just a suggestion. I, I, I would, I would like to, the things I want to see on it is the ability for community development to post a public notices. Mr. Slade, does that solve some of the issues, public notice, when you put it on the website, far as legality and the, and the, and the posting and stuff like that? Or is that just really more strictly for informational purposes?
It's informational, uh, you know, the statutes are drawn that, that it has to be published in a newspaper, you know, circulation. That will not qualify to satisfy the statute.
I still, how many calls y'all get, you know?
How many what now?
Calls do you get from people inquiring about when you put a notice up and stuff like that?
You know, we get, we get a few.
Do you think having that on the website would help alleviate any of that?
It might.
What's a good idea anyway?
It's a good idea. I don't think it'll help a lot because they still get the sign, the first thing.
We're gonna have our own list out there soon now too, and we can roll that out.
And we, and we just want it easy to find when you, when you get on that page, it's just where it just doesn't, you don't have to know where you're going. You can have something keying you off that main page to link it.
Easier navigational flow.
No doubt about it.
Um, for people to find.
Yeah, where words stick out, say, hey, this is what I'm looking for. I hit this, it takes me to that link or whatever.
Simple words like zoning.
Also, in addition to that, you know, that we've talked about new, uh, pictures or however it's done, and that is gonna be an additional cost. We're gonna have to find somebody that can, right, can do that for us.
The sheriff's got pilots, doesn't he? Uh, that might be willing to help us.
They're not, they don't have that I, you know?
That I?
I think there's a, I saw a video of a guy, uh. Rich, Mark Rich, he's done some videos of some.
I've got a guy, I've got a guy that does that.
Let's borrow me, let's do something, we can drag this out just a little bit further and longer, so. We can make this, we can make this a platform for our reelection.
We can have the new pictures of the new board all there.
Exactly.
Do we have pictures of this board? I ain't seen it.
I think Walter Johnson's still on board out of, uh.
Yeah. See other people.
What else do you need from us, Marcus?
Uh, I mean, that, that may be it for now. Uh, I've got an initial meeting with them to figure out who the project manager is now and, and stuff like that and try to get this picked back up and get the ball rolling at 1:30 this afternoon. And from there, I'll get kind of the information, uh, that you guys gave me to them and they'll get me what they need back from me and we can start working on something, um, and try to give it a, a new look and everything, like you said.
Well, and some of the features that were sold to us, you know, I would like to see actually work.
Right.
You know, like, I think it'd be huge for somebody, if we can't rent one of our facilities online, at least see the availability, see what's open, what dates are available.
Calendar.
Calendar, yeah, of each one of our locations we have.
All right.
And I know that's a whole payment, how to reimburse, like we ought to do a refund. I know that's an issue that we may not be able to work out, but we ought to at least be able to have a calendar online to see what's out there.
Sure.
And also, one of the big sellers was, you know, several years ago, uh, Bob Wedgworth came in wanting to, he was pushing a product called 911 or something like that.
Emergency alerts?
Yeah, but it was, uh, supposed to be able to register with our website that whenever we have, uh, a severe condition come up, we'll automatically send out a text to every user we have. Now, that was supposed to be available on our website. Mike, you got something?
I can speak to that just a little bit if you.
Yes, sir.
I've been in, I've been in, I've been, Mr. Bob Morrow asked me several months ago, that was one of the things that he had, he wondered, why is this not here, information about, uh, weather warnings and things like this? And I really couldn't give him a good answer. And, uh, there, there's several companies out there that do that. Code Red is one. Um, we have done at the EOC several webinars, looking at different companies to come up with, and I've actually got the information. It is extremely expensive. Uh, when I say, when I say expensive, it's 14.
This guy, they said that if we sign up, there should be an option on our current website that you can register. And so that whenever we have severe weather, you or some users can go in there and put in and it should text everyone who's registered, you know, that we have a condition, whatever it be.
That's correct. The way that system, so, the way I understand it, the way that system is now, the only people that can do that is IT. That's the only folks that can authorize that.
Well, we can get that changed.
And the thing is, is having some type of an automated comes directly off of the National Weather Service.
And if they can't do that, um, if, if, if E-Gov's not capable of providing that, which wouldn't surprise me because they've let us down on other stuff, then by all means, we'll look at another product. But I, we paid for it, we paid good money for it and if we can get it work, I'd love to see it work, you know, I know you would too.
With, with what Mr. Morrow was asking me about, the cheapest rate with the most funds now that we come up with is $14,000 a year.
Yeah, okay.
I know that's.
What are you looking for people to do?
Well, if we got a tornado coming or if there's a wreck or, you know.
It's almost similar to what Jay's talking about, is what we get now on alerts from your phone, you let it go off under.
That's what I'm talking about. You already, you already got weather.com out there, you, we'll, we'll pass you the dickens out of you and tell you it's fixed to rain at 10:16.
You have to register through our website. And you're supposed to, as you register, you can select what you want to be notified about.
Yeah.
About the way alerts now, it does tell you, I mean, it may be one coming up in North Rankin and that's sending a message down to me down in South End. I mean, you're like.
All that, all that stuff, all that stuff is so much better now, so it's, they may have some updates on when we originally bought it or when y'all originally bought it, but we just need to explore it, figure out what it is.
Right now, it keeps going off, I just get rid of it.
Well, I mean, that's one of the features that helped us move that direction and it's never worked.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'd like, if, if you had something that worked.
But you could have something also saying the storm shelter that's open now.
Yeah.
That's not, you don't get that.
Of course, the sheriff's got an app, you know, I get notifications from time to time. I'm finally figuring out how to get it turned on. I get it, you know, uh, so. Anything else for, for Marcus?
Yes, while he, while he's here, he has a, a little matter of AT&amp;T for our new facility about running fiber optic or an option to that or whatever. He'll tell you.
So I think, I think we're actually covered, we're covered under state contract, but I, we just wanted to double, make sure we had authority from the board to order the circuit from AT&amp;T for the new unit facility. Uh, we've got a cost on that, uh, that should be at, uh, $445.50 a month, uh, and to get them to run that fiber. They're gonna run the fiber at no one time cost for us, so just the monthly fee. And that'll be monthly fee once we're actually, uh, once the circuit is in place and running.
We need to add that.
You need a motion?
Motion to add to the agenda by Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve by Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Marcus.
That, that is opposed, tell them what that is opposed to doing, running the fiber ourselves that would cost us.
Yeah, so, so we actually ran a, a couple of ballpark estimates to figure out what it would be to extend our own fiber on Marquette Road out that far.
Since we have some.
Because of the distance, uh, and the amount of, of feet that we would have to run that fiber, we're looking at a cost of around $100,000 to actually extend our own fiber, uh, we can pay for the AT&amp;T circuit a whole lot cheaper out there, so.
20 years.
Yeah, yeah, I break even on that. It's, it's a long time, so, yeah.
Thank you, Marcus. Not it?
Probably cut now.
All right, Mr. Breck, come on up. You've waited patiently.
Oh, yeah.
Let's talk fire trucks. Come on. It's morning, boy.
When you get to stepping, I gotta go.
Okay, this past previous year, uh, I put in for, uh, uh, one fire truck and one tanker. Uh, we did, go ahead and order the tanker. It was approved, uh, the O was cut. Um, but we've been asked to purchase a additional fire truck for, we'll let you fire for me. Um, it was not in my budget. I told Ms. Law on it and, uh, she said that we, we probably see, possibly can move some money around and, and make that happen.
Well, we need, one, you need a fire truck.
All right, so, all right, so let me ask you this question here. Why would we, tell me, tell me the process you go right now on how you got the fire trucks you, we were, you put in your budget to order. How did we get to there?
Went off of, uh, years of service on the fire trucks.
All right, so who was due for, you, you put in for two?
Put in for two.
Who were the two trucks?
Uh, one was for Cleary and, uh, one was for, for Robin Hood. It was actually a tanker, not a fire truck, so it was one tanker.
So the only fire truck was Cleary. All right, so what's their status on fire trucks? How many, how many county trucks do they have now?
They have one county fire truck.
How old is it?
It is, um.
They got one before this one's getting there.
Right, right.
So the one, the one they got right now, how old is it?
They have two county fire trucks.
Today they have?
They have two county fire trucks, yes.
So they're fixing to have three?
No, we're fixing to take one out of service and put one back in. The, uh, one that we're looking at, uh, replacing is a, uh, 1980, no, excuse me, 1994 truck.
All right, so the newest one they got at Cleary is what?
Is a 2009.
So they got a 2009 pumper in there right now. Who's next up, next year that you were coming for?
Uh, next year will be, um.
Hang on, wait, a pumper? That's the one, that's the main one, right?
Yeah, that's what they fight fire off of. Yeah, all right, so next year's.
Wait a second, Jay, wait a second, let, let Daniel go through his thing.
Going into next year, who is up for a fire truck then?
Uh, next year's on the agenda will be, uh, Evergreen.
Evergreen, how old is their truck?
Uh, Evergreen has got a, uh, it's gonna be a 2000, excuse me, a 1998 truck.
Okay, so.
The, the, the progression is, I'm, I'm trying to stay ahead of, you know, so, so we don't get caught like we were in the past, buying four trucks, four trucks, four trucks and four trucks.
All right, yeah, and I, I get you on that. So I'm just trying to figure out the balance of it. So how mad is it to delay not buying Clearys this year and buying Clearys next year? As compared to.
We're building, you forget the fire station, we're fixing to build, it's gotta have a fire truck.
Yeah, well, it's got two now. How long, the one that's gonna, you're gonna roll out, how many more years it have in service? It's already out.
It's out.
So you got one down there right now?
And with the new station going in.
When does the new station open?
It's, uh, well.
I didn't know we was building a new station.
They are, they're, they're a fire district. They got their own applicable base.
So then when, when is it open?
It, I, I can go and.
I think we're gonna maybe make a little small contribution to the fire station.
Yeah, but we got, we got, um.
Requests coming, I imagine.
Six months within an.
Finalizing the land. I mean, it's a little more than I want to get into right now.
Evergreen is on Andrew Chapel.
Yes, sir.
I was there and boy, that, their trucks sure look a lot more pristine than a 99.
That's the problem, that's the problem, Steve, they do, they look brand new, but they're, they got the years on them.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we can't help it. Yeah, I mean, we can't help it.
All right, so I guess my thing is, is we've never bought Peleachi one. And they're running, and, and they're running a hundred calls outside the city for the county a year, and we've never bought them one. So if every voluntary department in the county has a truck, pumper, that we paid for, yet minus Peleachi, and they're running over a hundred plus calls a year outside of it, to me, they go to the top of the list, in my opinion, on Peleachi's side of it. Do you, what do you think? What's your opinion?
I will do whatever you tell me to do. That is your opinion. I got a good one to add.
Why would Peleachi not ever been on this list?
You can't just snatch that out. You wanna add one to it, that's fine. I'm all about that. But I don't, I'm not.
Well, what about those, Cleary or any of the others?
There's an attitude that the city needs to step in and try to provide some sort of help.
But Florence, we paid for theirs.
Much the difference in Florence and Peleachi.
Yeah, I was, I was.
I think there's, uh, there's, uh, they don't even, they see themselves as a city.
Well, where is Peleachi's truck at now? How many years does it have on it?
They don't have one by her.
Yeah.
They got a truck.
Well, I think they're building another station on top of that, I think.
Cleary, uh, Peleachi is, is, is looking to build another station.
No, I was just asking, how old is their truck?
Their, um.
What I don't want to ha, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jay.
I just wanna know how their truck is.
Their truck runs out of service this year.
So they won't have one. And I guess my thing is, one, we need to, Peleachi need a truck, but for the same point, they're running calls in the county far outside of the number. That's why it's important to me is because.
Well, how long would it take us to get, for us to get them a truck?
If we were to bump the one you had planned this year and buy them next year, what does that do to your schedule you had laid out?
Just, I have to do some more shuffling and juggling.
All right, talk to me on the tanker, just a second. You were buying a tanker for who?
For Robin Hood.
All right, does Robin Hood have a tanker now?
Yes.
How old is it?
It is a dead trap. It's a nineteen eighty model truck.
You, you ready to leave?
Woo, all right.
I'm sorry. You look like you're ready to leave.
The next closest tanker, the next closer tank, next closest tanker in the Robin Hood is what?
Um, I'll have to go back and look at that. We don't buy tankers every year. We just, we just don't.
Is there another one close to it, you would think? I guess my point is, one of them to me could be, instead of adding another five hundred thousand dollars into the budget to buy another truck, which I guess is an option still to have.
Three, and that, actually cheaper than that, they're three hundred and fifty-five.
All right, so three fifty. Add another three fifty into the budget. Are you better taking off the, can you, can Robin Hood wait a year on the tanker, is my question? They can't. They cannot. They gotta have, I mean, I'm with you. If it's a seventy-four truck?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's warm.
I believe you.
So what are you asking, I'm back up, let's back up here. What are we asking to do today? We need to add one additional?
I, I was coming to y'all this morning to find out on the, can I add another truck to that? Are y'all okay with me adding, or do you want me to wait?
We're already doing a tanker for Robin Hood.
Are we doing a tanker for Robin Hood? We're doing a, a truck for Cleary.
When, when, when do you expect to buy the truck for, uh, Cleary? Time frame?
Soon as you tell me to.
So you, you've been ordered today?
Before today?
If you tell me yes, I was gonna turn this P O in. If you tell me no, then I was gonna rewrite it and just put one truck on there.
All right, timeframe on the truck?
Two hundred and ninety days.
Summer, summer.
You, you, well, actually, you're looking at first of September.
Arrival date.
Arrival date, yes, sir.
So you got one in the budget.
Let's just say a year.
You got one in the budget approved.
I got one in the budget approved and one tanker approved. I'm asking for an additional truck.
Truck, so a total of three for this F Y nineteen?
Yes, sir.
Two are in the budget, one more. Miss Oster thinks she can wave her magic wand over the books and make all that money move around in a mystical manner and make it pay for it?
What happens is, we do not have the money in the fire budget as it stands, but that's normal. What we do on our regular rotation is money out of the Grand Gulf fund is what we use to rotate in to purchase these. We do have enough out there in that to, to purchase it this year. I do not know further down the road how that will affect the rotation that he's on, but we do have the funds to do this, if this is what the board wants to do.
To buy two?
Yes.
Well, I guess it would be three if you count the tanker.
Sometimes what happens also, and, and Brett can tell you this, is we, when they start ordering them, say he ordered it in October or November when the new year starts, for whatever reason, production, we might get it in September, but we don't pay for it until the next year. So at least that is just, it gets a little bit off kilter sometimes. It's ordered in one year, doesn't come into the next budget year to be paid for.
Are you going on state contract on the pumpers?
Yes.
What type are they?
Uh, Pierce.
All right, so.
Just like, a, 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 a prime example now.
And I, and I guess my question is.
In the Grand Gulf to shift, like I said, I do not know how that will affect future rotation because I don't know the, the, the amount of money we get each year into that fund varies. I don't know how long it'll be that, I guess we'll get it as long as the, as Grand Gulf is there. So we can, we use it for this purpose.
And, and remember, let's do.
We know for sure we're gonna have to add a unit. So you need to figure out how we're gonna be able to function, make all that tie in together, whether we buy now or next year, whatever. Personally, I'm not for adding another this year, but I, uh, you know, I'd like to know how we're gonna make this work.
I bet if it was, think about it, it won't be here, it's nearly a year.
And they didn't have one at all.
Do you have to order Pierce off state contracts?
All right.
Do you have to order Pierce off state contracts?
All right, wait a second.
Could you order E one? Any of them? I'm seeing one might be a faster turnaround.
Okay, let's, let's, hang on a second. We're, we're, the big decision here is to go ahead and buy Peleachi a truck, right? That's the one that's not in the budget.
Correct.
They make over a hundred calls a year out into the county.
More than that, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Peleachi does not have a receptacle to relieve itself in, you know, so we need to help them out with this.
They don't have a what?
I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of making the thing off. I'd be a nice, you know, we're on video. I got Marcus out there shaking his head at us, you know, so. I'm in fa, I'm in, I, I'm in favor of figuring out a way to get Peleachi their truck. That's one.
One second, too.
That's two votes.
Yeah, that's three.
Got three votes. You got three votes. Somebody wanna make a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion.
I make a motion to add that to the agenda, or is that a suspicion?
Vote.
And potential action.
Ma'am?
It's already potential action.
Before we even got started.
But, uh, I guess my thing is, before we take the route of the additional truck, as far as coming out of straight cash forward, I need to think, I think, I'd like this lease system just options on the table on time deliveries, the station bill, I mean, the timeframes and the whole thing.
Well, it's gonna take two hundred and ninety days. It's gonna be there.
The station will be there two ninety?
Talking about nearly a year.
I, I mean, yeah, I mean, if it, if it's two ninety, I mean, I.
Personally, I'd like to see, you gonna have to figure out your rotation anyway, over adding a unit. So no matter what, you know, we, I'm all for my Peleachi truck. I don't, I wasn't saying I wasn't gonna do that. I just wasn't wanting to buy two or three trucks this year. I'd rather us.
They're buying three instead of two.
Or however many we were.
You're buying, you'll be at, you're up to three now instead of two.
Yeah, right. So I'd rather just buy two, leave Cleary on the shelf till next year, since they have one that's.
They, they have two trucks?
Since they have one that's not out of service or past fifteen years.
What's the date that, that rolls out? That pumper rolls out at Cleary?
I'll have to pull up what month it is. I'll, I'll just look at the year.
Is it this year, though?
It is this year, yes.
So if you don't go with your order now, then you're gonna go out, run up and buy them again.
He said that they have one.
They got two.
And he's only gonna roll out. The Peleachi just came up, I mean, it was unknown.
Because of our screw up.
Well, I don't know where it came.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I mean, I don't know.
We need to do a better job of seeing what these fire departments need and.
They totally don't.
Well, when you end up.
When you end up in a situation you're in right now.
Situation we're in, where we got a fire department that serves a lot of people, and they don't have trucks, and they don't have resources to give them.
Cause the point, the point of this is to get Peleachi a truck as soon as possible. That's the point of the whole thing. Especially when they're really taking on a lot of county calls.
When you, uh, when you, on, on all the fire truck specs, they're, they're gonna give you that, that timeframe, you know, a hundred and, say a hundred and ninety days to two ninety. It's, it's, it's what they're gonna give you, just, and all depends on, like, right now, the hurricane just went through Florida. So, I mean, that took out both fire truck manufacturers. Depends on how fast.
But you're going straight on state contract vehicle.
What y'all wanna do? Y'all make a motion with this one?
I think we, I'm gonna make a motion to buy them the third truck.
State contract at three fifty is what it is? Ballpark?
Three, three fifty-five.
Based upon Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines.
Fire truck.
Daniel, good? Any questions and comments? Anybody else?
Yeah, but, and, and look, and, and the only thing, the only thing I want to say this too, it may delay next year on what we buy. I mean, if, if we're gonna, I mean. I just want to be sure we're getting a fire truck.
All in favor, say aye.
Well, let them get the first and the ayes then.
Aye.
We'll all, we'll be looking for some of that.
One more time, okay, I could, got three ayes there. All opposed, like sign?
Nay.
And nay. Mr. Bishop, let the record reflect that Mr. Bishop is anti-fire department, anti, uh, helping people out in the county, uh.
Hey, here's one thing I would like to see there. Instead of, contact Sunbelt, see what, see what their delivery time is. All right, two pumpers and a tanker is what the motion was, but, yeah, so.
Let the record reflect, four to one vote, motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Brett?
I want another timeframe.
Well, I'm glad you showed up today, Brett. Boy, good to see you.
I like another timeframe.
Oh, when I come, it's always gonna hurt it faster.
Thank you, Brett. All right, Miss Oster, what else you got? I know we've got more things to cover. Wait a second, you're coming, Mike, I know.
We do. Um, this is, uh, Saint Jude, the, uh, their, uh, dream home giveaway, and it's authority to waive the fee, the permit fee like we did.
I make a motion, we add it to the agenda. Second by Mr. Bishop, all in favor, say aye. Motion to approve. Second by Mr. Bishop, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. What else?
Um, Renee has an item on the inspection fees.
Renee?
What we wanted to do was have an opportunity to discuss with y'all the home inspection report, the utility permit fees.
Can we do that at the next meeting?
If you would like, yes.
It's gonna be a while.
Okay.
And I know we got a lot of, do y'all mind if we do this at our next meeting?
That's up to her. She wonder what her timeline is.
November first is what you're talking. That'll be fine.
Okay.
All right, be that one. What else you got, Miss Oster?
I gotta go to a golf tournament.
Mr. Harrison waved his hand back there. What you got, Mike?
Go ahead, Mike.
I didn't know.
If you need to leave, Jay, feel free to go ahead and go. Don't worry about what we'll conduct while you're gone. Don't worry about what was found approved while you're gone. Sweat that.
I'm just glad we found, I found out we had a Grand Gulf account.
Well, don't worry, it's gone now.
Uh, I need to approve of y'all, uh, buying a milling machine on state contract. We're gonna enter into an agreement with CAD on a buyback and they are, and their service agreement. So I have to run that through the board as a.
I tell you, you know, I think we need it, and I'm all for it, but I'm also all for this striping. I didn't realize how much the, the senior citizen folks in our county, I'm sorry, would you let me finish? Uh, is that how much they depend on that white line at night to get home?
Amen.
You know, and listening to Mike talk that, you know, that, uh, that not a lot of people out there in the private market, private sector does strike. It's kind of limited to the, to the facility. I know it's costing money, but, you know, I don't know, man, it's taking four, huh?
Look at the cost.
Half day.
Well, I, I had this budgeted right here. I can look at the costs of that, but, uh.
What's the striker cost? What's the striker cost?
It's probably gonna cost what this milling machine costs, yes.
What is that?
Three eighty-five.
Four hundred thousand?
Four hundred thousand.
The problem, the problem is, is they're limited number of people that strike.
Yeah.
Amen.
I'm still trying to get a road stripe ass for several months ago, you know?
That's approved.
Yeah, I just had, all I had was a service agreement, buyback for y'all, such as on state contract.
Blends in more than when that's great. Wait a minute.
What did you just do? What did he say, say?
Add, yeah, add to do the service agreement, whatever.
And buy it.
Yeah.
And buy, and buy the milling machine?
That what you do? Is that your motion to buy and add the, the thing?
Laura, you said that's what, we had that in the budget, right?
I think he came up, he talking about the striper.
I move the conversation to the striper.
I'll check on that, Mr. Bob, and I'll have some information for y'all with work session.
No, we're gonna check on, we'll, we'll do the next one. Uh, he'll check, come report back to us on the first.
I'll report.
We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and do the bidding today. We're gonna, he's gonna underground for us by the first on the, on the striping side. Basically by Mr. Bishop to add this to the, to the agenda. Second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carry. Motion to approve by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Congratulations, you have a milling machine.
Thank y'all.
You're welcome.
Appreciate y'all's help.
Thank you, Mike. Is that it, Laura? Pleasure.
I've got one more item. Uh, we had talked to y'all quite a while back about the sheriff's department, uh, being the one in the future to, um, get the voting machines to the precincts. And I have two quotes here for trailers, for enclosed trailers, um, a six by twelve, there would be five of them, uh, for a total of twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty. And the question is, number one, who's going to pay for this? This was not a budgeted item, so, um, are y'all willing to?
Gonna take five to haul all those machines?